And, you know, my interpretation, I don't know what their interpretation, I actually haven't spoken to them about it, is that you've chosen to kick sand in their faces. And it's not, nothing against Bob West. I don't think anybody is opposed to Bob West being put into a position of greater responsibility, and I think he's proven himself in Heartland, but that's not a very good rival. And then the other point that is, at the last meeting, there were a couple of parting shots at these new people coming on to basically ridicule and even insult them in terms of their opinions, that they have not even come onto the board. Yes, they may not know everything that you know at this point in time, but they've been elected to come onto this board, and it seems like the intention is to, is to not welcome them to the board. So that's at least my interpretation. And as for the, to me, the big issue is, is what's going to happen to the business climate in Heartland. And they're, you know, I don't know how to put it other than, the, the basic Republican issues of the, of the day are to try to reduce regulation and increase the, improve the environment for business nationwide, as being, having been defined as a problem for the country. Well, I think Heartland has got this same problem. And I don't just think it, your own surveys have proved it. We've managed to, one way or another, through the regulation and the business environment, take two very large and successful companies, Walmart, to in effect bankrupt their operation in Heartland, and Ramco Gershenson. And I know what your official responses are to those things. I know that from, they gave up on Heartland. So, and we face the likelihood, you read the papers, you turn on the news, that they're saying that probably something like 65% of restaurants in the country will close permanently, permanently, because of the environment that exists. And, you know, I know it firsthand in terms of what we're doing. Fortunately, we have other operations that we think we can survive. But this board doesn't seem to have recognized that. In no way has-
Mr. Kraus, your three minutes are up.
Okay. In no way has the instructions to the Planning Commission changed to make Heartland any more business friendly. So that's my comments.
So I do need to respond just to two comments. First of all, the, the two candidates that are here this evening are not elected yet. They would be elected potentially in November. That's number one. Number two, we were one of the first communities in the state of Michigan to go out and do whatever we could to expand and allow businesses to increase their square footage outdoors. We did that in May.
And to my knowledge, nobody was able to take advantage of that.
I would disagree with that.
And to my knowledge, that's the only loosening of regulations that has happened, perhaps ever in Heart-
I'm not going to get into an argument tonight, but we have done things. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else this evening? A call to the public. Thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda.
So move?
Support. Motion by trustee Harper, second by treasurer Horning. Any discussion?
Yeah, I was wondering if we could have further discussion on 6F.
That was going to be, Bob wasn't going to talk about that, but we can move that up to the regular meeting if you'd like. Okay. Can you move that to, because I think we already added to 9A?
9B.
Could that be 9B?
Sure.
Okay. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Be none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have our audit presentation this evening. John Pfeffer, who has been with the township for several years, will open us up, give us a preview of our audit, which ended, I believe, in March 31st of 2020. So this is a, where we were after our last fiscal year. And John, if you want to go ahead and open up your comments, and then we'll open it up to the board for any further comments. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Again, what I'd first like to say is, I would like to thank the Township Board of, as having us as your independent auditors. It's a privilege to work with Heartland Township. We look forward to it every year, and everybody here is really easy to work with and does a great job. So again, thank you for having us as your auditors. Along with that, as I was alluding to, the, this year's audit, because of, you know, COVID, and working as a remote audit, there was a lot of extra work that had to be, be done by the township staff, which is very important, because here we're trying to learn a new way of auditing remotely. So again, we could look at some documents, we could come out periodically and get the documents and look at. But there was a lot of work that, that had to be done. And I just wanted to, you know, let the board know the great job that the staff did doing this, because it's very important for a couple reasons. One is to get the audit timely done, and to get it done within the budget, so there's no additional charges. So again, I can't say enough about the, the staff of the township for the great job they did. Along with that, again, it's very important, the position of, that Susan has as the finance director. And what I'd like to do is explain a little bit more about that job. The township has a water utilities fund, sewer fund, and then many other funds, special assessment funds, bond funds, and it's sort of like many companies in one. So again, when, when we go in and we audit a, a regular business, the person is taking care of just one entity. But here at the township, there's, there's several entities, which is important. And then what I look at is, is if I was sitting on the board, so how accurate is the financial information that you're getting as a board member? And again, you know, it's very important to know that the, we had very few, if, if none, adjustments, no adjustments this year. And what that tells you is, is that the, the information you're getting is very accurate. So, so that's very important to know as, as a board member. And again, as you're making decisions that are very important. Along with that, too, in the very beginning of our audit report, which is 86 pages long, the good news is we're issuing what we call an unmodified opinion, which mean, it's actually the highest level of opinion that the independent auditor can issue, and that your financial statements are presented fairly. So this is important for a couple of reasons. One, obviously, you know everything's in order, just on the local level. But the state of Michigan looks at it for a couple of reasons. One is for state shared revenues to continue. And again, if there's any issues with your opinion, they will delay those state shared revenues, which are very important. The other item that is important is for bonding. So again, when they take a look at your financial statements and your financial condition, those both come into play, you know, as far as the audit goes. So they really look at that very hard. So that's important to know. What I'd like you to do is if you could change the graph to the last page, and go to fund balance. Let's see here. Here we go. So we're at fund balance. So what, again, as auditors, we get these questions all the time. What's a good fund balance? And if you look at that, it's about 2.8 million in the general fund, which is important, because, again, there's a lot of uncertainty with COVID. Is this going to come back again in the, in the wintertime? Is there going to be problems with revenues in the future? But again, your fund balance at this time is healthy, because your expenditures in the general fund are around $2 million annually. So you have enough to get you through a period of time if the state shared revenues were held up. Susan's done a lot of research on that to, to find that. Both this year and the next couple of years, there should be small reductions in the state shared revenues. But again, that's, there could still be unforeseen things, like, you know, we ran into this year. So it's just a good thing to note. Another thing to note on that graph, it's a little bit older there on there, is back in '12, which is an important thing that the township did, you know, to, to just bring this back into perspective. That year, you paid off the debt on the township hall, which was important, because you had, had tight budgets, you, you know, stayed within budgets, you built up your fund balance, and you paid down that debt. That was a huge savings and interest over these years. The reason why you're able to also add, increase those fund balances during that time was you reduced this interest quite a bit during the year. You've also done that in, in another fund this past year. And again, that fund-
Before you go for, before you go, maybe just give a definition of fund balance and the general fund for the public, so they understand what that means.
So what happens is, is that if you were in the first year of the township, it just started, and the revenues were $1 million, and your expenditures were $900,000, what's left over is the fund balance. And normally, it equates to cash. But what happens is, there's many, there's many things that can occur in a governmental unit over the years that can really affect that adversely. One could be some litigation that occurs, things like that. And the good thing is you've been able to keep this fund balance growing at, at a good pace. But also, this is a perfect example, where, again, we ran, you know, with COVID hitting this year, and being able to withstand this, you guys are in really good shape to withstand the first hit of that, if there's a second hit, or whatever happens in the future. Basically, you're in good position for that. And it's basic, and what it has to do with is, again, staying with budget, within budget, not overspending. During the year, the good things were, you did put money into the pathways, into Springer Field, you also put money over to the capital improvement fund. So again, you know, there was a lot of good things that occurred, even though you, you know, you kept your fund balance pretty steady. It went down a little bit, but it's still pretty steady. So the important thing is sometimes the attitude is, oh, we got to get rid of this fund balance, you know, we're not spending the money. Well, again, you know, you are spending the money on things, like the pathways and the fields and different things like that. And you are keeping that at a safe level, which is important. So you could have 10 accountants up here, and you'll get 10 different opinions. Anyway, what I've seen, though, I've seen, I've seen many different things occur at the governmental level. Another thing you withstood that was, that was phenomenal during this period of time, that you got through, and let me give you an example, I've run into another unit, it has to do with the sewers, or, you know, when you have a special assessment. And what happens is, you know, we had a real downturn in the economy that occurred. And when that occurred, what happened was, is I had units where they didn't get the growth. And the growth didn't come, and so they didn't have the money to pay the bonds. They actually had to levy a township-wide assessment on all the people of the township, the ones that didn't live anywhere close to the sewer. And again, you weathered that storm, that occurred, as we know, a few years back, and we had, again, that situation occur, but you got through that. So you're really in a good place financially right now. Again, also to clarify, of the, of the debt that you have, of the, it's like, what happened was, is this year you started at 25 million, you're now down to 21 million. 15 million of that has to do with the sewers or utilities. That's a natural thing you're going to have with growth. You know, if you have no growth, you're not going to have a sewer, you're not going to have a water fund, no one, you know, can, is, you know, can use those services. But again, this in this year, and part of that was due to a refunding, and also you putting money in from the township to do this, and Susan can explain a lot better than I can, but I look at someone auditor, he went from 25 to 21. That's, that's a significant change that occurs during the year. So, again, I wanted to point that out. I always like to look at it from the standpoint that if I was on the board, what I'd want to hear. Another, another item that's very important, and again, you're all aware of this, is, again, the fire millage is coming up. So that budget is, is a tight budget, and it's not coming up for another year. But again, that's an important thing you have to address, because, you know, the fire department, basically, the millage covers the expenditures, and it's a wash, basically, but that's going to be coming up in another year or so. So I just wanted to throw that out there. That's not really on top of the radar screen, but I want to throw out that. And then, one of the, probably the most important things had to do with the investments of the township. So, again, it's, you know, sometimes hard to believe, but the treasurer is responsible for those funds being invested. And what's happened is, which is really good, it's very difficult these times, as Joe would know, to get a kind of a good rate, and to ensure collateralized, or make sure the money's with good institutions, what the treasurer has done. We have over $19 million out there. So if there's a black Tuesday, a black Friday, you can't be affected by that. And the treasurer's done a good job by, you know, investing the funds, spreading them out with different institutions that are strong in, in Michigan, not, not out of state, not out of the country. And what that does is, that will shield you when those, those things occur, that you will not be affected. There's also things that they offer treasurers many times, different bonds and things that can pay a higher rate. And the good news is, I really don't like to see that, because in the interim period before the bonds come due, they show many times that you've lost money. And also, if you needed the money, you'd have to cash them out, which you don't want to do. And again, the good news is, Heartland Township has done none of that. So I can't say enough, you know, about that. Then if you go back to the first graph. So this is an important thing for the residents to see, everybody, you know, in the public here tonight. So here's the general fund. The eye, the eye-opening thing of, of the township general fund is 1.365, okay, my reading test isn't so good, but almost 1.4 million is for state shared revenues. Taxes is a much smaller part. Most of the taxes are, a large proportion goes to the schools, which is great. But again, the township's portion is the 546. So this is why it's so important about these state shared revenues. Now, let's talk about where they come from. They come from sales tax. What do we have? We just hit the wall with the COVID. But things, in my mind, are coming back strongly. You know, we, we do a lot of business, corporate work in businesses, you deal with, small carpenters, painters, restaurants, different things. And obviously, certain ones are affected, like restaurants, but many other businesses are coming back strongly right now. And I, I don't really see that this is going to be affected. And Susan's done some great research to show that it won't be affected much. So the good news is, from a budgeting standpoint, you should be pretty strong right there, as far as that revenue source. So again, I wanted to make sure everybody understood that. You have a few other revenues there that come in, rental, cable fees. The admin fees are really part of the taxes, it's a 1% fee. It tries to cover all the expenses of the treasurer and, and other areas, to try to collect those taxes. And, you know, collecting special assessments, collecting things like that. So there are some other revenues that come into the general, but really, most of it is state shared revenues, which is very important. Again, the last item I'd just like to mention is, again, COVID-19. So the good news, again, is you are really positioned well to get through this. And again, I don't have a crystal ball about what's going to happen, you know, down the road. I really feel strongly, with the way this economy is, that it's a freight train you can't stop. It's, it should be really good, it should come back. I feel strongly about it. There's a lot of good things happening that should really help that economy. So I'm hopeful that you really won't be affected by that going forward. Plus, your fund balance is in good shape. And I want to open up for any questions you might have.
Bob, can you go back to our fund balance chart, the last one? Susan, the, you know, we went down a little bit this year. Do you want to explain the things we did that caused it to go down a little?
Sure. So we transferred over our, the normal surplus for capital projects, but we also made the decision to lend the money to Bullard Road, the Bullard Lake Road project. So instead of going out to bond that project, we financed it at a rate of 3.3%. And so the board made that decision to go ahead and, you know, do a little extra from a capital project standpoint, to fund that specific road project.
And that money, we get repaid back?
That's correct. We, that will be paid back through a special assessment district.
We've done that a few different times, Greg.
We've done that numerous times with Mill, well, Mill Point we bonded for, but Orr Valley, we financed.
Forest Brook.
Forest Brook and SAD 200, we did finance those through the sewer fund.
Exactly. Those are the, we've saved so much money by going back and refunding those for, over the period of time, that saved the taxpayers a lot of money for that as well.
Right. That's true.
What was the last one, again?
We refunded the M59, Heartland Road SAD, and that saved the property owners.
About $1.5 million.
That was, you know, we, we threw some cash at it from early payoffs that didn't come out of the general fund, that came in through some early payoffs as well. And, and we saved three, three, over 3% on interest for those parcel owners.
One other item, too, I didn't mention, was you saved a lot of money when you brought in the water management to the township, too, which was additional work that you guys had to do, but that saved a lot of money.
Did you talk about the fire millage?
I just mentioned, yeah, that's very important.
Yeah, this one.
That, you have to address that. That's on the radar screen, not this year, but it's coming up. And the importance of that is, is that it, the millage covers the expenses. If you don't have the millage, you would have to very quickly make some decisions, you know, how to go forward.
Because most of our funds are funded in the future, but this one is funded as we go.
As you go. So the money comes in as the expenditures go. It's not like the money's sitting there.
Right.
So, you know, you really need that millage.
For clarification, that will be on the November ballot.
Okay.
This, this year.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Other questions? Matt, any other questions?
Nobody else?
No.
I'll make a motion to accept the audit report from Pfeffer, Hannah, Ferdinand, Palca.
Support.
Second by trustee Kliney. Any other discussion? Be none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
The last thing I'd say is that, it's just a little plug for us, is that, the one thing about our firm, and, you know, I'm here tonight, and, you know, the, one of the main, main partners that, you know, been government auditing for many, many years, I must say, many. But I really, you know, again, we take pride in being involved in the audit. We don't, you know, it's not juniors coming out, or other people. Obviously, you know, they, we weren't coming out this year. You guys missed out on the donuts, but that's the way it goes. So anyway, it is important, from our standpoint, to be, to be involved with the audit from beginning to end. So I just wanted to, you know, mention that, so. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, John.
Next, we have applicant site plan number 20-008. This is for a concept plan for Redwood Plan Development. Good evening. If you'd like to come up to the, we do have our planner here this evening, Troy Langer. And Troy, if you'd like to go ahead and take over this portion, where they are in the process, location, and then we can-
Maybe if you could introduce some?
Oh, by the way, welcome. And your names are?
Is this one working?
Yes.
Okay. Patricia Ricosi with Redwood, 7510 East Pleasant Valley Road, and our corporate office is located in Independence, Ohio.
Thank you.
My name is Emily Engelhardt, also with Redwood.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. So with that, Troy, if you'd want to give a brief, kind of, this is a plan development. So maybe just a little bit of what that process looks like, where we are in the process, and then you can go into your, your presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I, this is kind of an abbreviated presentation. The applicants have applied for a plan development for, it's about 152-unit apartment complex. It, the apartment complex is open to anyone. However, they do tend to cater more towards, I don't want to say retirees, but, and not necessarily elderly, but
[laughter]
a little bit older demographic, although they are open to, to anyone. The plan development process, generally speaking, has three phases to it. The first phase is conceptual. This is where a developer, an applicant, can put together a very basic concept plan, and present that to the Planning Commission and to the board to get feedback. There's not a formal decision, it's just to give feedback on the project. And from that, the applicant will go back and decide, is this project worth moving forward? Because if they decide to, there's considerable more expense for them to move forward. So they'll make a decision after hearing feedback on how they want to proceed. And this is that phase we're in right here. This is the conceptual portion of it. They've been in front of the Planning Commission already, they've had, they've gotten feedback from them. The next part of the conceptual review is to get feedback from the Township Board. Presuming that they move on, the, the, the middle phase is called the preliminary review. And that's where they'll have to have much more detailed plans, landscape plans, lighting plans. Will have to have a little more information on the building elevations, exact materials, roofing materials. So that'll be a little bit more of an investment for them to put together those type of plans. They'll come back to the Planning Commission for a recommendation, and then they'll also come back to the Township Board for a final decision on the preliminary. And then the last phase is a final phase. And that is where we look at more of the legal documents, any cross-access agreements, any, in this case, there might be a land division associated, associated with it. We'll look at more of just the legal easements, other, there's no real condominium documents or master deeds in this one, but we would look at any recordable instruments that might be part of this project. So we're really not in the final phase, we're really not going to be looking at site plan stuff anymore. So it's that middle phase is where you really get into the heavy site plan stuff. So as I mentioned, this is a plan development. We're in the conceptual phase. This project is in the Heartland Glen Golf Course property, which is south of M59, and near where Cundy Road would intersect with M59. They're looking to occupy about 29, 29 and a half acres, so they're, the Heartland Glen Golf Course property is 385 acres. So this is just the northern portion of it. There's a significant portion of that golf course property beyond this plan that you see there. They are utilizing the main drive, Heartland Glen Road that, or lane that goes into, serve the golf course property. And then they have a, a separate access up to Cundy Road. And then this is kind of the layout that they've presented, you see there in front of you. And with that, I'll just leave it open for any questions or comments you might have.
Would you like to, any comments?
I would just like to say that we came before the Planning Commission, as Troy Langer said a few weeks ago, we presented a very conceptual plan. We came before the Planning Commission to understand what the process was. We had a pretty, I think, a pretty lengthy and detailed discussion on what the Planning Commission is looking for as far as our project. Wanted to come before you, to seem to get your comments, so that we can move forward with this. We are very excited about bringing a Redwood neighborhood to Heartland, and this is just as the first step for concept. Again, we'd like to get your comments, any questions that we can answer, so that we can continue to move this process forward.
Trustee-
Pass.
Trustee Kliney.
We work as a team.
You're our liaison to-
Yeah, one of the questions I had was, I know that you did a pro, a project out in City of Rochester Hills, or City of Rochester, over here in, in Oakland County. And I had asked to have you provide some elevations and, and where that project was located. Did you happen to bring those today, any chance?
Not from the, the elevations, but I will tell you, I believe you asked what, what criteria they had-
Yes.
-for the elevations. And I did go to James Keys at MPG, our architect, and he told me that they did not require any additional, as far as our standard elevations.
Okay.
But I, I don't have those, but I did ask that question. And he did say that there was no additional elevationment required.
Would this be similar to the, your-
I'm sorry.
Would this be similar to your setup in White Lake?
You know that one.
You know?
Yes. So that, it would be a similar product. Obviously, design and layout is a little bit different, and I believe that was done a few years ago. And we continually do evolve our, you know, buildings and, and design, but conceptually, yes.
Okay, great. I like how they have garages.
Yes. All of our units are all two-bedroom, two-bathroom, with an attached two-car garage and a full driveway on each unit. And there's, I think, five different unit types, different interior layouts, and the- interior layouts, and thus, those translate to different building facades.
And then, as you can see, on the, the ones with the front porches, we put those on the main roads, and those would be going down
On Heartland Glen.
On Heartland Glen, we would have those. And then, as I only said, we have four or five different unit types, and we try to do, you know, especially when we have like a larger community where we have this amount of units, you know, like four or five different elevation types, maybe different colors, the stone usually is the same, the siding's a little bit different color, so that we have good aesthetics, as you're, you know, walk, you know, driving down, it's not all one facade, it's different. We also have on the, not on this one, but on, on our garages, we have like the coach doors, different lighting, and those are some of the elevations that we showed planning commission last, or two weeks ago, I guess, two or three weeks ago.
And I think one of the other comments we had was a lot of the, since, I think they go as long as a six unit, or eight.
Yes.
And, and so that roof line is extremely, it needs to be broken up with, with some, you know, sods that are
Yes, we talked about that, I believe, at the meeting.
Correct.
We said we could step some of the units and then use some of the dormers.
Correct.
To break that up, yes.
Because that roof line, it is, from a distance, it can look very much like a storage shed, and I don't, I think that's not the look that. Loud and clear.
Loud and clear.
Okay, very good.
Other questions?
Is there any, like a clubhouse or anything like that for people that will be able to gather, there's nothing like that here?
No, we don't provide any clubhouse, I mean, pools, nothing like that. If I could just add a little bit more to what Ms. Langer said, we, we do not discriminate at all, but we do market to professionals, seniors, and empty nesters, and we, we sell, if you will, a quiet, quiet neighborhoods, and so because of that, we don't have any type of that facility, however, in many of our communities, we will have like small park areas with like, what are those called?
Walking paths.
Walking paths, not, because you have pavilions, like pavilions with some benches and stuff, and some paths for walking.
Well, and you are at Heartland Glen Golf Course that has a clubhouse, so you kind of have a facility already available.
Yes.
And I guess, just to further that point, you know, we find that in, we have 100 neighborhoods throughout the Midwest and growing right now, we find that many of the residents of our communities are already living in the township, they're within three to five miles of the site, and are attracted to our neighborhoods for whatever reason, and they are already using gyms and the library and the senior center and places like that, so they prefer not to pay for them twice with a, you know, community center.
Makes sense.
And I would like to add one more thing, with Redwood, we started in 1991, I've been with them close to 15, 16 years now, and back when we started our first neighborhood, we built it, we own it, and we still own it and manage it. All of our 100 neighborhoods, as she indicated, and we're growing quickly because we have a good niche in the market, we own them, we, we buy the land, we land development ourselves, then we build them, we own them and manage them, so it's all Redwood, we take care of everything.
Any other board questions?
Just a quick question on the density numbers, I didn't, in listening to the planning commission meeting, I didn't quite understand how that seemed to work, even with the 40% that the planning commission could allocate to this project, it still seemed like it was over, or?
Yeah, it is, so on the density, when you calculate density for plan development, you refer to the future land use map, and that category that this is designated in basically has a density associated with it, and then for the purposes of planned development, that becomes the density for this project, with a provision in a planned development, there can be an increase if it's warranted. This development exceeds the density that's identified in the planned develop, or I'm sorry, in the future land use map. This area, the Heartland Glen property, was discussed at the last planning commission meeting, for a change to that future land use map designation, and the thoughts there are, and it's hard to pinpoint exact numbers, but the thoughts there are that a proposed modification of the future land use map is probably going to be discussed at a future planning commission meeting that would allow the density that we're looking at here for this project. But it's not there yet, so if you were having problems, wondering how's the density meet, those are good valid points, those were discussed at the planning commission meeting when this project was brought up, these applicants are made aware of that, they're aware of the planning commission moving forward with an amendment to the future land use map on its own, and there are other amendments to that future land use map that are also included, so there's quite a few changes that the planning commission's looking at, including this one.
Thank you.
Troy, I thought your comments were really thorough, I appreciate reading all that.
Oh, sure, thanks.
Any other comments, questions?
I would say that my comments are, is that while I recognize what Troy just said in terms of density, I think that the quality of your final development is going to be contingent on having enough open space to satisfy the residents, you know, exercise needs and things like that, and then also the landscaping, I think that it just adds so much to the, when you move in, if it's, it's like a house that doesn't have a front door, I mean, it's really what it boils down to. The other concern I have is that, you know, with the density required, you're going to need water and sewer, and I'm just curious, at this point, since this is just a preliminary plan, we have not got comments back from DPW, our engineers, I think, I think the fire authority did provide some preliminary comments. So, in terms of timing and construction, obviously, there's many more steps to get to that point, but do you have any concerns now with utilities at all?
Based off the information that we have been given by Heartland and making, having some meetings, at this point, no. We do know that it's going to be, you know, a certain timeframe for that to happen, and we're fine with that timeframe. But just to let you know, that now that we're getting your comments, you know, anytime we go through the planning approval process, it just takes time, and we know that, and but we'd like to move things as quickly as possible, that's why I wanted to come to you this evening, right after our planning commission meeting that we had, so that we could get your feedback, so we can, we can move that process forward. If I could address your landscaping concern, I will tell you that Redwood does extensive landscaping, we do beautiful buffering around, all street trees, each of our units has its own landscaping, we also now are doing sod in the front of our yards and the sides, we also sawed at our entrances, and we have sprinkler systems. So, we do, and I will tell you that we work very hard to maintain all of that, our rent structures in all of our neighborhoods are pretty high, and to keep that and maintain those, we have to keep a certain level of cleanliness and safety and keep it looking new and fresh, and we do a very good job of doing that. So, I can tell you that I think once we get all of our landscaping in, that you will be pleased with that, but as part of the approval process, we do know that you do need a landscape plan, and we will provide a very detailed plan for that.
And perhaps I could add to that, trustee Germaine, kind of spearheading the water extension project, this is a joint effort or a collective effort between multiple developers, Redwood being one of the projects involved in that discussion. We have set up essentially a schedule with milestones by which each developer, as well as the township, needs to meet in order to get water where it needs to be by the time everybody, every project is shovel-ready. We don't see at this point in time any delays, we've laid that schedule out, and to date, the, although it's still somewhat early, we have all the developers and all the vested parties remaining on track. As you know, last year, we designed the water main project, so we are ahead of schedule, the permitting has been approved, we're just working out the final details of the financing aspect, and possibly some assessment agreements if deemed necessary, so we do actually have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to move forward with one of the anomalies associated with the single developer, and then an update will be sent out to all the vested parties, so we are on track, we're not at risk for anything at this point in time, the utilities are projected to be there in time for them.
We've actually, Matt, we actually have a calendar of when everybody wants to start breaking ground, and where everybody needs to be in the process, so I believe, doesn't that go through next April or March?
Yes, essentially, the intention is to have everybody shovel-ready by, by spring, once the frost laws are off, and hopefully have the project out to bid, the financing secured as needed, and we have laid that all out clear with each developer, kind of on a single Gantt chart, if you will, with the milestones where each developer also needs to be in their approval process, so the big issue is, in order for this to work, all the developers need to kind of move at the same time to get to the same point, so we've, we've had a collective meeting with all the developers and sat down and developed this, and it seems to be coming to fruition. We do have some time in front of us, but we do also continue monitoring that, and we see no risk with it at this point in time.
Troy, any final comments?
Not, not really, we've been working with this company for some time, they came to the township a while ago at a different location, and I didn't really know much of the company at that time, and since then, I've gotten to know the company, and they, it's, is amazing the growth that they've had, and the niche market that they have, and the success that they have in, in their, in their product, so.
Thank you, and thank you for coming this evening, do you have any, any final comment?
Not at this time, but you'll see us again.
Alrighty, thank you.
And thanks to Mr. West and Mr. Langer for all their help so far.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep. Okay, we'll move on to pending and new business, number one is, Larry?
9A, I'd like to give an update on the manager's committee, the contract for the township manager is not finalized, we have some minor legal language that we got to clean up, so again, we're not 100% done with that, but in light of that, I would like to make a motion to name Robert West the interim manager effective immediately, until we can get those final details all wrapped up.
Second.
Motion by Clerk Shofu, second by Kathy Horning, just one quick question, is, would you anticipate to have that ready for our next meeting?
Yes.
Which is, I believe, October 6th?
Yes.
Okay, any questions? Being non-allies in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have opposed, nay, motion carries. And I believe trustee Germaine asked that the consent agenda, is it number F?
Yes.
Yeah.
Be taken off, so you have the floor.
Well, I just wanted to get some input from the public works director on the revisions that are proposed and why.
Absolutely, and obviously, if I were to become the township manager, I was foreshadowing what would be required with the public works vacancy, and certainly, we would want to minimize the downtime and obviously post that position, so I was going through the job description, and to me, it just, I felt there were some terms that were a little bit too general, and all I did under requirements was add number six and number seven, then highlighted them in red, just a couple preferred experience, to let an applicant know who's looking at this position, kind of what it entails on the administrative side of things, a couple, you know, certainly building relationships, exceptional communication, as well as project management, which wasn't necessarily called out clear in the other requirements or job description. I mentioned a couple software programs that would benefit an applicant, just so they get a little bit more sense of what we're looking for. I'm trying to fine-tune it, I guess, to be a little bit more specific, these are municipal software programs, obviously, GIS is beyond municipal realm, but BSNA software is kind of the industry standard, and it's used at many different municipalities, and I just thought it might add some value to a potential applicant looking to apply.
So, we move to approve the new job description for the DPW director.
With support?
Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by trustee Germaine, any discussion? Being non-allies in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have opposed, nay, motion carries. Board reports, start with trustee Petrucci.
I'd like to give you the results of the teen center golf outing that we had last Sunday, considering that we're going through this issue with COVID-19, we did pretty well, we raised a little over $8,000, and after expenses, we will net about a little over $7,000, so it wasn't bad at all, it was a fun day, we had our regulars out there, and I'd just like to thank all of the participants and sponsors of the event.
Thank you, clerk Shofu.
Just a brief update on ballots and that type of thing, we've got over 5,000 absentee ballot applications ready to go, ballots just arrived, so we will be doing testing next week, and the first set of absentee ballots will be mailed out right around September 24th.
Thank you, treasurer Horning.
I just want to make a public thank you to my staff, on Monday, the last tax collection day, our total tax roll is $12 million, they processed $2 million in payments in one day, and balanced to the penny, and awesome job.
Thank you, trustee Kalani.
I have nothing to report, other than I concur with Joe Petrucci on, it was a great event this weekend for the Heartland Teen Center, so.
Thank you, trustee Germaine.
Two things I would like to mention quickly, first is that the, has, there was the Sofalane spill that happened on Lone Tree Road a number of years ago, and in the process of closing that facility, was determined that there was a, some fairly extensive soil and groundwater contamination. The latest quarterly report has been received from the consultant through EGO, and they just completed their second consecutive quarter of no detections limit, you know, nothing was detected in the monitoring wells that had been previously contaminated, so the, the project needs to continue for at least one year with no hits before it would be considered clean, so additional testing will still be happening for the third and fourth quarters of this year, in fact, the third quarter sampling was to happen this, this last week. So, I just wanted to bring that up, I'll forward the report to Andrew here, so he can get it uploaded to our website like we've done in the past for the community. And then the second thing I wanted to bring up quickly is that the HERO board did have a meeting at the teen center about two weeks ago, and I noticed at that time that the sidewalk in front of the building is very, very deteriorated, to the point where it could be a trip hazard and someone could get injured, so I phoned the DPW director the next day, I believe, and told him about it, do you have any updates on when or if we can make some improvements there?
I do, the field staff actually purchased the materials, they're going to saw cut that and clean it up, and then patch it temporarily, I cannot ensure that it's going to blend as well and look uniform, it will be safe, and that will be our underlying goal, it's a temporary fix, we recognize that, but it will allow us to get a greater scope of what's feasibility of how much more that sidewalk is deteriorating and what's underneath it, so we will examine that, but for the, in the interim, it's a very cheap, very quick fix, but we, we have the equipment, we're going to saw cut it out, the gap, if you will, is what I'm going to call it, because it's a substantial gap between two sidewalk panels. two sidewalk panels. We are going to correct that, and we hope to have it done by the end of the week.
Okay. Not surprised that you're acting that quickly, but thank you for the update.
Absolutely.
Thank you, and I'm going to defer my comments to Bob, so he can explain to everybody what's happening this Saturday at the old high school.
Yes, this Saturday, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, at the Heartland High School in the student parking lot, we are having the annual large item cleanup day. That is an event that is geared for Heartland residents to bring items that normally they'd be unable to put out by the curb, large items that are just bulky and they've been looking for a place to get rid of them. We are here to take them. We have equipment to load them into dumpsters, we have a ton of help there. There's not much I've seen refused, other than the stuff that we're not permitted to take, which would be hazardous materials, which include your batteries or your paints, oil-based paints. If you bring latex paint, the cap must be removed, it must be solid. Local hardware stores and big box stores do sell a powder, you can mix with paint, that will solidify it. It works wonders. I would encourage people who want to get rid of paint to do that, the lid must be off. And we have electronics recycling, we have scrap tires we'll be accepting, and we have just a slew of volunteers, and it's a great community event, and I hope everybody comes out.
And Bob, refrigeration units, there's a charge of $25 on it?
Yes, if you bring anything with Freon or an appliance with Freon, there is a $25 fee, but we will dispose of that after we remove the Freon. So that is a service we provide, that is, you know, we have to hire a contractor to evacuate the Freon, which is where that fee goes to, so.
But you can bring them there.
Absolutely, we will take them.
The hours again were?
9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So I will say, just for the viewing public, there's no advantage in getting there early. It seems to be the busiest time, when you'll actually wait the longest, is the first half hour, because so many people anticipate getting there. It actually, we have a, it's very systematic, you get through the line very quickly, wait times are actually the longest, though, for the first half hour, because so many people are in a rush to get there, so. But I encourage you to come throughout the day, and it's, there's no better time, I guess, other than, you know, it's a pretty steady stream, and it's been super successful in prior years. So we hope to be able to continue this. Recycling, I guess, implications from the state of Michigan may prevent certain materials in subsequent years. So we're on the edge of scrap tires as being one of them. That's becoming more and more challenging, but this year, we do offer that. I cannot necessarily guarantee that in subsequent years, but great event.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else have anything else before we take a brief recess? Troy, you can head out if you want.
I don't have to. I have no report.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, he does it to you, too.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I have to put a star next to your name before you even spoke, so, thank you. We'll take a brief recess, and then we'll just have a quick update. I'll go through the manager's report on behalf of, you can stick around if you want. You're going to stick around for this part?
Yeah, I was just going to go grab a drink.
Okay, no problem.
Excuse me, everyone, I was supposed to start vacation today, but I thought tonight was an important meeting, so I came, but my family's like texting me, you know, so I'm heading on vacation.
Enjoy your vacation.
Our grandson's being baptized in Philly.
Oh, wow.
You driving tonight?
No, but.
Oh, okay.
I haven't even found you.
Yeah, I have the same problem, I'm only 65.
We have a few more meetings left, we can get ready.
We're just going to stay here.
Yeah, just stay here.